Okay, it's 1:30. I'd like to call to order the Ottawa County Board of Commissioners. The date is Tuesday, July 28. Our invocation this afternoon is by Commissioner Fenske, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by our clerk, Justin Robach. Please rise.
You pray with me. Most heavenly Father, we thank you for the many abundant blessings you have bestowed upon us. Your presence has become our protection and source to lead us through the heavy burden of the pandemic. As leaders of our community, we have chosen to lead with wisdom and peace as we rebuild our economy and well-being of our residents. Lord, help us to remember the needs of the less fortunate. We pray to you, Lord, to bless those that are sick and suffering, lonely, discouraged, or without hope that they receive the healing presence of your love. We ask for your blessing of our families, our servicemen and women, our police, fire, and first responders, that you keep them safe. We pray for social justice so that all of God's children have what they need: racial harmony. Racial harmony is caring for people that are different from you. Racial harmony is loving for different kinds of colors, too. Racial harmony is beautiful. That's why God created me and you. Let's make this world a wonderful place where all people are happy regardless of race. So be in harmony with all different colors. That's my message to you. In your name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Fenske, for that prayer. Justin, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Garcia.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Zylestra.
Yeah.
Mr. Danenberg.
Here.
Mr. Meppeling.
Here.
Mr. Chirpstra.
Here.
Mr. Holtlur. Mr. DeYoung.
Here.
Mr. Kyers.
Here.
Mr. Bergman.
Here.
And Mr. Fenske.
Here.
Chair, we have a quorum.
Presentation of petitions and communications.
None from us.
Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is public comment. For those members in the public, in the audience, who want to make a public comment, please come to the microphone, give us your name and your address, and we have three minutes. We'll allow you three minutes to speak. For those members who might be on Zoom, please use the raise the hand feature on Zoom to let us know that you want to speak. The county will acknowledge each speaker in order to which, in which they have raised their hands. When you are asked to speak, we will unmute you, and then we ask for your, you, for you to state your name and address, and then you have three minutes to speak. Please note that the public comment portion of the meeting is meant for you to address the Board of Commissioners with any comments, issues, concerns, or opinions that you may have. It's not meant to be a back-and-forth dialogue or a question-and-answer session. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission at this time? If not, is there anyone on Zoom?
No, Mr. Chair, we don't have any public comments on Zoom. Yeah, she's on the agenda following the public comment.
Okay, all right. Next thing is communication from county staff, an update from public health. Lisa Stefanowski.
Good afternoon, everybody. Long time no see. Good to see all of you. I just wanted to provide a little bit of an update and offer you the opportunity to ask any questions or, you know, obtain any information that you've been getting from your constituents. So for today, I just want to start with some statistics. Over the last seven days, we've been seeing, on average, nineteen new cases per day. Recent increases in cases is mainly driven by the younger population, which is between the ages of twenty and twenty-nine years old, and this is really a similar pattern to what we're seeing across the United States. Testing volumes have increased quite substantially in the month of July, and we're up about thirty-five percent of all tests conducted among Ottawa residents, they were completed in the first few weeks of July. The increase in testing strengthens our ability to find and isolate new cases and quarantine their contacts, and so that's why testing is so, so, so important. And I know you all hear a lot about testing on the news, so I thought I'd mention that. It's good news that we're able to do more testing. When talking about testing, though, we also need to talk about positivity because it's just not about increasing the number of tests. Test positivity, which is, it really means it's the proportion of tests that come back positive, that has been relatively stable over the last week. So despite the increase in testing and the increase in case counts, the overall flat trend in positivity suggests that disease spread is happening at a slower rate, which is good news. And I'm just kind of reading some notes that I've made here. Finally, we're calling on the general public and the younger cases especially to answer their telephone calls. We're finding that some people just don't pick up their phone, they don't want to talk to us, or they maybe pick up and find out that it's us, and then they hang up. And I just want to be really clear, we're not trying to invade anybody's privacy. Doing case and contact investigation is something that is, it's written right into the public health code, it's extremely important for us to, again, identify those cases and educate them on how not to spread the disease to others. And when we call people, we call, we tell them that they've had a positive test, we tell them what to do and how to communicate with their employer, we give them some really good health information on how they can, you know, get over COVID and become healthy and back to work as quickly as possible. We also ask them to give us the names of their contacts, which is also a really, really important aspect of controlling the spread of disease. Some people are a little reluctant to do that, but I just want you all to know that those names are also held in strict confidence. And what we do with the contact is we call those contacts and we, again, provide information and education and tell them to quarantine and stay away from people for fourteen days. And we also check in on them every day just to make sure that they're doing okay. And in the event that they develop symptoms, they have a healthcare provider in us that will help them to know what to do in order to protect their own health. So it's really all about controlling the spread of disease and helping people and providing those services so that they can get back to their jobs and their family and get to good health. So we're also working very closely with school districts. I know that we're all very, very concerned about large numbers of students going back to school. I can assure you that we believe that children really need to be in school. Education is so, so important. It's another important aspect of good public health, but we want them to do that safely. And so we're working very closely with our intermediate school district and all the school superintendents so that we can all work together to put plans in place that protect our students and our school workers. It's very fearful for them. You probably hear a lot of information that for young people, the disease may not be as severe. That's a matter of, for some children, it is as severe, but for many, it isn't. But we still have great concerns about the adult population that's working at schools as teachers and food service workers and janitorial staff, et cetera. So we're working really closely with them to figure that out. We're also working, again, with our migrant communities. I mentioned that this is a particularly vulnerable population because, in many cases, they're living in congregate settings. We are seeing some cases, and we're working closely with our local farm growers and business owners, and some cases, their employers that just employ seasonal farm workers. And so we're making sure that testing is available to them and that we are working with the state to provide alternative housing so that they don't have to live in a congregate setting where it's really easy to transmit and spread the disease. So on that note, I'm sure you know that I could talk all day, but I'll spare you and just offer you an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have at this time.
Commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Lisa, how many are hospitalized, are the migrants of the farming? Any idea percentage of them that are test positive?
I don't have any migrant workers at this time that I know of that are hospitalized. I believe this is Commissioner Kyers. Is that who I'm speaking with?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can, I would be happy to pull those hospitalization numbers for you. We are not overall seeing an increase in the number of cases that are being hospitalized, which, again, is very good news. You're not, we're not seeing the same trend that we're seeing throughout the United States. But we do keep information on the different demographics with regard to hospitalizations. I will pull that information for you and make sure that I get it to you today.
Oh, perfect. Thanks.
You bet.
Anyone else?
Greg? Yeah, Lisa, this is Greg. This is, I think, our third week of the mask mandate. What are your statistics showing to date as far as wearing the mask? And what difference that's had made over the last two and a half, three weeks?
I can't draw a direct relationship with mask-wearing, but going back to the statistics that I said early in the brief presentation, in the last couple of weeks, we have started to see a flattening in the number of cases, which that is good news. And so there may be a relationship there. I'd like to think there is. We are seeing more people wearing masks. From my public health director perspective, I'd like to see more people wearing masks. It's a really effective and very easy way to protect yourself and, most importantly, to protect others. And I always like to remind people that in Ottawa County, we do things the Ottawa way, and wearing a mask is a great way to say, I care about you, I care about my community, and I want to protect you from a disease that I may be carrying unknowingly. So keep wearing your mask, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Joe?
Lisa, Joe Baumann, quick question for you. The individual that is not showing symptoms, test positive, is quarantined for two weeks. What happens if he tests positive after the end of the two weeks?
At that point, it's interesting because it's all about the statistics, and I don't want to get into too much detail, but the person that goes into quarantine was exposed to a case. So you're saying they go through their fourteen days quarantine and they never become a case, right?
They were tested. They tested positive.
Oh, the case tested positive, yeah.
They have no symptoms.
Right.
So they go into quarantine for two weeks.
Okay.
After two weeks, they're tested again. If they're, if they test positive again, do they go back into quarantine for another two weeks?
So there's two different things. So quarantine is different than isolation, and so if a person is a case, that means they've had a positive test, they become isolated. And isolation is not necessarily the fourteen-day period. It is, and you're challenging me a little bit with, I think it's ten days, and there's like twenty-four hours of no fever and no symptoms. And it might be slightly different than that, but that's different than just the general fourteen-day period. The fourteen-day period is only for the contact of the person who was tested positive, which we call the case. So to answer your question for the case, so let's say they go through the ten days, they're without symptoms and they're without fever for the twenty-four-hour period, and then they have another test. That is, I think, handled on a case-by-case basis, but I can confirm that. We have had people that have come back with positive tests that may just be, like viral shedding, it may not mean that they're still sick or they're still able to spread the disease. And so we would work with, you know, health professionals to figure out, you know, how long it's been, and there might be other variables that are considered with those situations.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa, or thank you, Mr. Chair, Lisa, Randy Meppeling, question for you. When the state does the reporting and they tell us, and I'm just going to use an example, let's say they say there's twenty deaths on a particular day. They do that, and then they will come back and also say that fifty percent of those deaths were due to a records check. My question is, is, does the count then go on that day? Or does the count then go back in time and get readjusted on the day where the person actually deceased? Or are we seeing a death numbers necessarily that's, that's a combination of time when that, so do you know how they're counting that or how they report that?
Um, okay, let me think, because this is another complicated issue. So when, when we receive a notice of death, the death is counted on the specific day that their death certificate, you know, that they died. When they do record checks, which basically it's, you know, just kind of going back through the death certificates, and all physicians are the ones that sign up on the death certificates, and they're the ones that determine the manner and cause of death, unless it's a medical examiner case. But most COVID cases are just the attending physician signing off on the death certificate. If they go back and find that we didn't count a COVID death, that would revert back to the actual date that they passed away in our records. So did I answer your question?
Yes, the, the report, or when we're seeing the graph, they're not adjusting, they're adjusting the graph based on the date, not necessarily on the day that they've received the information.
Absolutely, yeah. That's my understanding, but I'm going to fact-check that.
Lisa, I've got a couple of simple questions. Can you clarify what the executive order is on masks for restaurants? Right, I've heard some stories where people understand that the waitresses need to wear masks, but not the cooks. Is that true?
The waitresses, anybody who is front-facing, we say, needs to be wearing a mask. There have been some loosening of the requirements for the back staff because of, if you're working over a dishwasher or a hot stove, and you can maintain a six-foot different, excuse me, distance, they have relaxed that a little bit.
Okay.
A lot of, a lot of staff are still doing that, are still wearing it. But they're getting, like, they're given mask breaks and things.
Okay, and then my other question, as a former educator, and I also would like to see all our students back in school, but when I hear statements that children are less likely to transmit the virus, you know, I question how we can validate that when our students have not been in a large crowd setting since April or May. So they haven't been in a classroom with thirty students, or they haven't been interacting with their ball team or whatever. So, so I question that, and I wonder what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, you're bringing up a really excellent point. The data to date isn't really conclusive for children. It's sort of leaning in the direction that they may be having less of your cases and maybe not spreading the disease as much as in the older populations, but we, we need to confirm that. So it's speculation at this point, and more data definitely needs to be collected on that. And we're, we're taking all that into consideration when developing policies and rules and guidance for the schools. And then we're going to be pretty strict on things like distancing and masking, and especially in certain age groups, like as you get older, because we can't control where they are in school, like in a high school, they're just all over the place in the movie classes. You know, the only way to, to manage transmission is to keep people distanced, cohort kids, and mask.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, hey, Lisa, just a quick question on testing. I'm glad that testing is up. Are, what are the turnaround times looking like in Ottawa? Are we seeing a twenty-four, forty-eight hours, or you see horror stories where someone is like, got it two, two weeks at the waiting for their test results?
This is another really good question, and it's a really significant challenge. Even though we may have more tests, the turnaround times have been really long, and it's been difficult. And from a public health perspective, it is very, very challenging. It's challenging for the worker, too, who goes in to get a test and then has to wait seven days, and they're out of work that entire time waiting for their result, and maybe finding out that it's negative and that they could have been working that whole time. It is hard. There, there, the labs are backed up because we have been doing so many more tests. The labs just have, they don't have the capacity to do the number of tests that are being submitted. And we've, we've had mandates from the governor's office, which are good, they're good public health, for things like long-term care facilities, where we are required to go in, not we, but the long-term cares are required to do testing on a periodic basis of all of their residents as well as all of their staff. And so you've got these big lots or bulks of tests going in all at once, and it really backs up the system. We've been working closely with our labs to try to streamline process, try to cut back a little bit on the paperwork, try to assist them wherever we can to speed up the, the test turnaround time, but it's, we're still not there yet. I'm just being completely honest.
The chairman of the question? Yeah. Okay.
Lisa, Matt, if someone passes away of a heart attack or a car accident or in another way, are those individuals automatically tested for COVID? And how does that connect with the, the cause of death on, on the death certificate?
I don't believe that a person in a car accident is automatically tested for COVID. If a person, I actually, Commissioner DeYoung asked a question similar to this, and I sent a real nice explanation of how the cause of death is determined, and I'd be happy to send that to you so that you can review that, and then if you have additional questions, I'd be happy to try to answer that or put you in contact with the medical examiner. But, but we don't always try to stick a COVID sticker on people who have died. Generally, it's people who have maybe had symptoms similar or like COVID symptoms that may be tested at death or, you know, shortly after death. It wouldn't be a person who's randomly in a car accident or dies of, you know, some other known cause that we would test or that the doctor would order a test on.
Okay.
Lisa, I wonder if you could send that to all of us, because, because we get those questions as well.
That is the most frequently asked question that I get from my constituents.
Yes, absolutely. I would be happy to send that to you.
Okay, all right. Is anyone else? Yes.
Lisa, I only have one thing. Al Danenberg here. Lisa, I want to thank you for the job you do in your department, everybody in there. This has got to be getting old for you. You used to work on a lot of different things, and now you seem to be working on one thing, and it just repeats and repeats. But I want to thank you, and I'm going to reach out to the other departments of the county, Sheriff's Department, emergency managers, a lot of those, they're getting sick of this, too. And I'm not saying that we're, we're not, we're far from being in all the woods on this one. So, but anyway, Lisa, thank everybody in your department for the hard work, so.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And, and yes, I, I am sick of it.
Lisa, I think we can all agree that we, we thank you for your service and what you're doing. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you all, too, for your support.
Just a minute. We're not done yet. Wait, is there anybody else has any questions? Oh, okay, so we're done. Thanks.
Thank you. I will follow up on the items that, that I said I would.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else from county staff that wants to communicate with us? We're going to keep it to three minutes. We'll give you three minutes, I should say. Okay, next thing is approval of agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
Show moved. Support.
Moved and supported? Comments or questions? Justin, would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Mr. Zylestra.
Yes.
Mr. Kyers.
Yeah.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Holtlur.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Meppeling.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Chirpstra.
Yeah.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next thing is consent resolutions. Mr. Fenske, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion to approve consent resolutions one through four, please.
Moved and supported? Comments or questions? Justin, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Zylestra.
Yes.
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Kyers. Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Meppeling.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Holtlur.
Yes.
Mr. Chirpstra.
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next thing is from administration. Mr. Kyers, would you read that one, please?
Sure. Declaration of Local State Emergency. The motion is to approve and authorize the board chairperson and clerk register to sign the resolution to extend the state of emergency within Ottawa County due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Second. Moved and seconded? Comments or questions? Justin, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Meppeling.
Yes.
Mr. Holtlur.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Zylestra.
Yes.
Mr. Chirpstra.
Yes.
Mr. Kyers.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
From policy and planning, Mr. DeYoung, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding the mileage policy, I move to approve the revised mileage policy, second reading.
Moved and supported? Comments or questions? Justin, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Chirpstra.
Yes.
Mr. Holtlur.
Yes.
Mr. Zylestra.
Yes.
Mr. Kyers.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Mepelink.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Penske.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Our next motion, the extension of the Michigan Department of Natural Resources trust fund grant agreement of the Bend area expansion, I move to approve and authorize the board chairperson and clerk register to sign the amendment to the grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources of the Bend area expansion.
Second. Moved and supported, comments or questions? Justin, would you call the roll please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Kyers.
Yes.
Mr. Hope floor.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia. Mr. Danenberg.
Yeah.
Mr. DeYoung. Mr. Zylestra.
Yes.
Mr. Chirpstra.
Yes.
Mr. Mepelink.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Penske.
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Our next motion of the Riverside Park paving renovation, I move to approve and authorize the board chairperson and clerk register to sign the low bid from Tulip City asphalt paving in the amount of ninety thousand eight hundred forty dollars for paving renovation at the Riverside Park, and forward to the Board of Commissioners for contract approval.
Support.
Removed and supported, comments or questions? Justin, would you call the roll please?
Sure. Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Penske.
Yes.
Mr. Zylestra.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Chirpstra.
Yes.
Mr. Mepelink.
Yes.
Mr. Hope floor.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Kyers.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Our next motion, Ottawa County MPO report, I move to approve the recommendations of the Ottawa County MPO Metropolitan Planning Organization report.
Support.
Supported, comments or questions? Mr. Fenske, you are representing us on Whimser Deck, who who represents us on the other MPOs? Any of our commissioners?
Jim Hope floor and I are on the Metro Council Board of Directors, and I'm on the Executive Committee of the Metro Council, and we have others who are on the planning and technical committees of that group.
On the MacDow Area Coordinating Council.
Okay, all right, okay. Justin, would you call the roll please?
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Mr. Mepelink.
Yes.
Mr. Chirpstra.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Hope floor.
Yes.
Mr. Zylestra.
Yes.
Mr. Kyers.
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
From Finance Administration Committee, Mr. Baumann.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding the walk-in freezer and cooler at the jail, make a motion to approve and authorize the board chairperson clerk register to sign the low bid from Phoenix Refrigeration in the amount of seventy-one thousand five hundred forty dollars for a new walk-in cooler and freezer unit at the jail. This project is included in the twenty twenty equipment replacement fund.
Support.
Been moved and supported, comments or questions? Would you call the roll please?
Mr. Kyers.
Yes.
Mr. Hope floor.
Yes.
Mr. Mepelink.
Yes.
Mr. Chirpstra.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Zylestra.
Yes.
Mr. Penske.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Regarding the purchase service agreement for specialized transportation services from Hope Network, I make a motion to approve and authorize the board chairperson and clerk register to sign the purchase service agreement for specialized transportation services from Hope Network, West Michigan.
Second.
Been moved and supported, comments or questions? Justin, would you call the roll please?
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Mr. Zalestra.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Hope floor.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Mepelink.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Chirpstra.
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next thing is appointments, none, discussion items, none, and report of county administrator.
Yes, as you know, we're deep in the budget process and very close to a balanced budget to bring to you in about a month, and also John and Doug have been continuing to work hard on the family court contract with Granger, the IPD contract with the Granger team, I should say, and we're also getting very close on the on completion of that process to bring to you for approval. Should you approve it, then it gets pitched to the building authority to oversee the project. Just a heads up that community mental health has received two major grants, significant sources of funding, they will be approaching finance at the next meeting to add nine new positions that are completely funded by those grants, and and obviously, the way we do things, part of our Ottawa way, is that those grants are are sunset with the grant money, so should the, we think the money will be around for a while, but in the event it should go away in the future, then the positions go away, unless the department comes to the board and gets approval to keep them. So I just wanted to give you a heads up, because that that seems like a huge amount to be adding, it is a huge amount to add, however, it is a hundred percent grant funded, and I think you'll be pleased with the program when you see it financed in the board, what they intend to do with with the positions. You know, we've been just hard at work, just continuing to do the projects you've approved. I know IT has been heavily involved with getting Microsoft three sixty-five implemented, and some of the security improvements that you've approved, the insurance authority approved the whole new security cam system throughout the the county, and that's a punchless status. And so we've we've just kind of kept all the major projects rolling while during COVID, fiscal did put in an application for the latest round of care funding, which was to actually reimburse the county for the entire payroll for health and public safety for the months of April and May, and should that come in, I think you'll see we'll be setting fairly well. In fact, right now, it looks like our bottom line could be improved if all that money does actually come in from where we would have anticipated it to be. And then also, just wanted to let you know that we are very closely, along with GCSI and MAC, and some of you, depending on some of the committees you're on, keeping close track of different pieces of legislation, or court cases, in the case of delinquent tax, that could have an impact on the county's financial standing. One of those of particular concern would be Senate Bill nine thirty-three, which kind of is about the same legislation that the governor vetoed that came out of the House, that would delay the summer tax collection until March of next year. You know, for us, that's the big one, that's the county operations tax, and that's over thirty million dollars, but then it sets up a mechanism that longtime attorney John X has deemed unconstitutional for counties to borrow money in anticipation of getting that money, and we really believe the governor should veto this legislation as well, we don't think it's a sound way of approaching a problem, and we really think that the summer tax collection should just go on as it always does. Other than that, I think that's it for today.
All right, any questions for Al?
I guess I'm gonna elaborate a little bit on Al. Last night, we had our health and me, mental health meeting, and Doug and Jim and Matt, maybe you can chime in too a little bit here, but that those grants started with our mileage for Ottawa County, we needed a little bit of that money to get the grant writers and all that on that.
Yes, right.
I mean, as they say, you need money to make money.
Yes.
And this is where it all started out, so I think we're looking at a little over a million dollars coming into the mental health budget, that we get to deal with what what we feel the county needs, so I think this is a big win-win for the county.
For you, right.
For mental health.
Yes.
Al, where are we with the Housing Commission?
Well, the Housing Commission, in fact, we have the chair right here, so I'm gonna defer to the chair.
For sure. For sure, so in August, we have our, getting back some of our survey results, and Paul, I think I saw you coming in, right? I think everything is back from the latest email, or Lynn was gonna send out one more round on that.
Yes, thank you, we did distribute a survey to housing partners, the Lake Shore Housing Alliance, to get some more information to inform the strategic planning session, we have just over fifty percent response rate right now from about the thirty agencies.
All right.
Lynn Raymond will do another follow-up.
All right. So the thought is that once we get all that in, we have our strategic planning meeting third Friday in August.
Twenty-first.
Just kind of get a lot of feedback from community partners, and then kind of take our next steps from there, you know, I think that there was a lot of great questions on there, and you know, Paul and your office did a great job designing that survey, just to kind of suss out what this community needs and wants as far as housing, and a lot of specific partners, you know, once we have that, I think that we can kind of plan some next steps for, you know, the short and long term, so I'm looking forward to that, that meeting in August.
So how's Ryan Kilpatrick fitting into this picture?
Yeah, Ryan is just a great collaborator in this process, he is incredibly knowledgeable, so he did work with us on the survey, we've also worked on distributing some information on a payment in lieu of taxes agreements, that we prepared an overview guide for, to help and work with local units on creating more affordable housing units through the county, through their processes, and we've also worked to prepare a letter and some information regarding the rejuvenation of the Housing Commission, and sent that to State Housing Director, in the attempt to get the Housing Commission fully recognized as a PHA to move forward.
Hopefully, we can have that meeting with, maybe by the end of this year yet, I mean, in-person meeting's still a little bit difficult, but.
Yes. Yeah, we plan to meet in person.
Yeah, so the mission knows who we are, what we're up to, and you know, we'll have some survey results back, you know, and we'll have some, you know, better idea of what we can talk them about as far as our vision, so that I think will be a key, you know, building block for the commission as well.
So I I'm gonna speak for Matt, so Matt has somebody from Cooperstown that wants to know, you know, what's happening with the Housing Commission, so that this isn't just Holland or Grand Haven, this is countywide, correct?
Yes, it's countywide.
He has something that he can say, that, you know, people in Cooperstown are going to be impacted by this, by this program as well, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, good, all right, any questions? Thanks. All right, any other questions for Al? If not, general information, comments, and meetings attended.
And Mr. Chair. Sir.
Yes.
I think to circle back on a discussion that we had about absentee ballots, and Justin's office has been really good about working, some some thoughts that I've had, you know, we did a really good thing, I think, with the the August four and then the November three, for me, there's still a missing piece. Oakland County, a few days ago, just took the step to put prepaid postage on their ballots, and I think if you look at, from the point of the Ottawa County residents, there's a convenience factor there, obviously, you know, if you have a ballot and has a postage ready to go, you're much less, much more likely to send your ballot in, and I think importantly, and Steve and I had this discussion, you're much more likely to send it in early, and I think, you know, what we've seen in New York, you know, where a lot of those ballots just don't get there in time, and we haven't had this, I mean, this will be a good experiment on the fourth, and see what that looks like, but we're gonna have a lot of people who've never voted absentee come November three, and my big worry is that they either won't send their ballot in, or they'll kind of put it on the back burner, because they don't have stamps, they don't have access to that, and then all of a sudden, that last weekend, our clerks get their ballots too late, and they get them on Wednesday, and those those ballots don't count. You know, everybody has a right to vote in this country, and if we can facilitate that right, I think that's something that we should look at, you know, I think the second point that Oakland County made is, I think the cost is sixty-five cents per ballot, Justin, is that right?
I believe so.
So nobody has sixty-five cent stamp, and then they usually end up making, buying two stamps, so they're paying a dollar ten for what is reality a sixty-five cents expense, and you know, so if we were to undertake that for county residents, we'd end up saving them money, you know, for each individual person, it's only forty cents, but spread out over forty thousand people, you know, that's a considerable cost saving, so, you know, one thing I'd be interested in, you know, finding out, is there any desire to kind of put that on a study session for this board?
Anybody else?
Yes.
Yeah, Stephanie said that, I'll just remind you guys, that the the virtual MAC conference is coming up, it's eighteen through the twentieth of August, and then it's the twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh, they'll be from like ten to noon, and then we have some major speakers, we have Tom Isle there, so Matt, you have to sign up, okay? No, I mean, you know, I know it, I know it takes a lot of your time, you don't have to attend every day, but if we could just sign up, just attend half of them off and on, you know, and if you got something busy, just attend one session and not the rest, we're we're good with that, we just, we'd really appreciate, it's not that much, not a big cost for us to sign up, so, any of you guys would do that, I'd appreciate it. Another thing, this Friday, we talked about, as the MAC board, the central region has an opening there, and we have somebody that's applied from Wayne County, Alicia Bell, we talked to her last week, Friday, had a good discussion with her, so we decided as a state that we would endorse and support Alicia Bell, which makes sense, because she's the only one from Michigan running for that position, there's four of them for that position, so hopefully, we get some, somebody from the central region on the NAICO board, so that would be good, so, them are the two things I got.
Roger.
Yes. Did you have something first?
Nope.
Okay, Matt, go ahead.
Last Friday, Mr. Bergman and I self attended the presentation, the egg board preserved our third farm, the Krydoffs, up in Chester Township, it's a pretty good sized chunk, about a hundred and sixty plus acres, and the entire farm was, the farm people were there, the family, three generations, all the way from a three-week-old baby, all the way, you know, up until a sixty-year-old, and it was really, really a nice ceremony, they appreciated the support that the Ottawa County Board has given, and you know, they realize that this is, there are three things that you need, you need water, you need food, and you need shelter, and they're they're providing one of those things. Their operation is not only in Ottawa County, but in Kent County and Muskegon County, and we were just talking earlier, Joe Bush and us, we're talking about hogs, and they raise right around twenty-seven thousand hogs, besides their crop farming and some dairy, so it's it was an exciting occasion, and it was good to see that we had representation there.
Fun experience. Frank?
Yes, I was wondering if our county clerk would be able to provide some, any information on on this coming Tuesday's election, any precautions for our, right, in-person voters, or are there safety precautions could be put in place?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner, I'd be happy to, and in fact, was planning to give a brief update, because we are, we're seven days out today from the from the election, and in terms of precinct voting, we have had PPE delivered here at the county that we've been facilitating the distribution of to all of the local clerks, so hand sanitizer, gloves, masks, and sanitizing wipes have all been distributed to the hundred and hundred and eleven precincts countywide, we're doing the last of that distribution tomorrow from our office. As of today, we have fifty-nine thousand eight hundred absentee ballots issued, which is definitely a record-shattering issuance of absentee ballots, our previous high watermark, Our previous high watermark, I believe, was the 2012 presidential, and we had 37,000. So it's a remarkable number of folks voting absentee. In fact, that, that would represent a 28% turnout countywide. Typically, we're around a 20% turnout in a normal August primary cycle. So with that said, there are 53% of those ballots back as of today. That's fairly common for the last week to be a major, a major push as people are kind of wait to the last minute prior to turning ballots in. So we'll see where we end up typically, you know, prior to pandemic and Proposal 3, I mean, we typically see about a 95%, 96% return rate on absentee. So we will, we'll see. So that, that said, I mean, that obviously plays a huge factor in terms of the precinct safety precautions because we're removing that number of people out of the precinct, which is certainly a good thing for our workers. So in terms of what we're doing in the precincts, all of our workers are required to wear face masks or some sort of facial covering. Voters are not required to do that in order to receive a ballot. The governor clarified that last week in one of her executive orders specifically. They are strongly encouraged to, and we definitely have signage that's been approved by the state that will, you know, encourage voters to do that. Face masks have all been provided for the workers, but we have not, we don't have capacity in terms of providing face masks for every single voter. There are extras in every precinct, so we hope people will take advantage of that. Physical distancing guidelines have been put in place as well in terms of as voters lining up, distancing between voting booths. And this is particularly difficult because a lot of our precinct locations are in smaller venues. I mean, every precinct location is a different shape and size, and so we've been working quite a bit with, between the state and our workers, excuse me, and our clerks to try to kind of navigate some of that. But those, those guidelines are in place to the greatest extent that we can possibly do that as well. We also have a large number of our clerks have opted to do plastic shielding at major sort of points of connection between the voters and the workers. So we have plastic shielding in place at the vast majority of our check-in stations. We'll have those as voters come in and receive ballots, and that's very helpful for sure. We've also been working with the clerks to provide drop boxes across, the state of Michigan has some CARES dollars that they've provided some grant funding specifically for absentee ballot drop boxes. Most of our jurisdictions have always had drop boxes, but a lot of them have not necessarily, you know, been sized for the volume of absentee ballots that some of our clerks are receiving in the drop box. So we've been coordinating that effort countywide to ensure that we have kind of a uniform process too for dropping ballots off. It is, it's not too late to vote absentee. Voters can still do that. Up until Friday, you can request a ballot by mail. However, we would strongly encourage that if you're mailing your ballot back to do it today. Seven days is what the post office basically gives as a guideline, so we would want people to mail a ballot back today. Local clerks do have open office hours this weekend, so voters can check out our website, miottawa.org-localclerks. All of that information is posted there as far as what the open hours are for absentee voting. Another thing we're following is an ACLU case that's currently before the Supreme Court, and that is in regards to ballots being accepted by postmark. So Michigan law states that your ballot has to be received by Election Day at 8:00 PM in order to count. The ACLU, following the May election, sued the state of Michigan over that and is requesting ballots postmarked by Election Day. So lower court denied that, and then it's currently, we expect that to be heard before the Supreme Court prior to the August 4 election. So we do have that that we're following as well. So that's just kind of a brief update from us. Appreciate it, Commissioner. There's a lot going on in the world of elections, for sure.
Anyone else?
I should probably advise you about the Rafeli decision that came down 10 days ago from the Michigan Supreme Court. This has to do with real estate, property tax foreclosures. If you haven't heard much about it, you will soon. Each February, I go before typically Judge Holsing along with Amanda's team, and we ask Judge Holsing to foreclose properties that are delinquent in their real estate taxes and penalties, and where the people have not developed a payment plan with the Treasurer's Office after, hopefully, interaction with the Treasurer's Office. Typically, we'll have at that point maybe 10, 15 properties. That's in February. The judge gives those until the end of March to redeem their property, if you will, by paying the taxes and interest and fees. For those properties that haven't done that by the end of March, those are foreclosed, and the county actually theoretically takes title to the property on April 1. Typically, Amanda will then sell the property in late August. Hopefully, the property realizes at least the taxes, penalties, and interest because we've already reimbursed the local units and the schools for that money out of our delinquent tax fund. If there's an excess under the General Property Tax Act, that goes to our delinquent tax fund. It's that excess that prompted the Rafeli suit. The first argument that the Rafeli plaintiffs made was, if I have equity in my property beyond the taxes, interest, and penalties, when you take that property on April 1, I've lost that equity, and you owe me the fair market value of that property. Their alternative argument was, when you sell the property in August and it results in an excess beyond the taxes, penalties, and interest, I deserve that excess, and if I don't get it, you've taken my property, which is that excess, which under common law should go to me. The Supreme Court in a 7-0 decision agreed with the alternative argument of the plaintiffs, that the General Property Tax Act, because it doesn't refund that excess to the property owner, results in the counties taking that property at the point of sale. All kinds of questions now arise as a result of that decision. First of all, how far back does it go? There's differing points of view among attorneys. Three years from the date of the litigation? If the litigation preserved the rights of Ottawa County residents? And there's a lot of questions about that. Is there some potential class actions out there? Or is it six years? If there are people that are entitled to these proceeds, are there individual problems with their claims? Some of them there are. We have some people that appealed when they didn't get that money and lost in the state court, and therefore, they're probably protected from getting it now. With some people, we don't know who the real owner of the property is. They've died. What do we do with those proceeds? There are a host of issues that we'll have to sort out, and I'll report back to you on how those are faring and how Ottawa County is faring as those issues get resolved. Fortunately, we don't have the 3,000 claims that Oakland County has. We have probably 10, 15, depending if it's three years or six years. But now we're going to have to decide as a community what we do going forward. The easiest thing to do would be to give a more robust redemption period after the foreclosure and before the sale, so that people could, if they really believe there's an excess, they can clear it before we actually sell it and then have that pot of money and then have to do something with that pot of money. Because as I've alluded to, that can be a very complicated question as to who we give that money to. We're foreclosing also mortgages. Now, most of the time, the banks are sufficiently efficient that they don't let the property go to tax foreclosure sale because they're wiping out their mortgage. Is it fair to the property owner or the bank that the property owner gets all of that money if there is a foreclosure because the bank was asleep at the switch and allowed the property to go to foreclosure? Again, we're going to have a lot of legal issues about that. But going forward, it's not efficient to allow the state of the law to continue. We need some clarity. We do not want to be in the business of having to decide where that excess goes. It's too complicated. It's too take time-consuming. So hopefully, we can come up legislatively with a redemption period like exists in the private mortgage foreclosure arrangements so that we don't end up having to make those decisions, and we can avoid the current mess that's been created. So that's Rafeli, and that's where we stand right now.
Question, Doug. Thanks for, appreciate that. Do you hear Amanda have an idea about if we go back three years? What does that look like, the fiscal cost for us? If they say, okay, three years is the backdating, what kind of number is that for us?
Again, we have some claims. One of the largest claims in that, well, it's more than three years. One that's four years out was a fairly large claim, and those people sued, lost in the Court of Appeals. And therefore, I think, you know, they, they might have a claim, they might come to you in equity and say, geez, you know, we should have won. We lost. That's our nature of our system. It's called the law of the case. If you lose, even though subsequently the law changes, you're out of law. So we have some complicated issues like that that make it difficult to answer that question directly. We had one property owner where the children said, we do not want the state of Michigan to come in on Medicaid and look at that equity because of other issues. Mom was in a nursing home, and we let the property go. We don't want it. Keep it. Because if we get it, the state's going to come after us and look at things in a more robust way. What do we do now with those folks? You know, so there's some complicated issues here that we're going to have to ferret out. But Amanda, do you have rough numbers, about three years, what we're looking at if every one of them were paid out?
I don't have that number. There's about 35 properties over those three years. Several of them are vacant pieces of property, some of them are gap properties. So I would estimate about 12 or 15 of those total are places are, that's proceeds, but I can get you those numbers this afternoon.
But like 10, 15,000 per property? Are you talking 100,000 per property?
It depends on the case. One last year where the family did not pay their taxes, came in and purchased it again. And so I think that proceeds probably would be about 100,000.
Okay.
Access proceeds.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Oakland, when I had a phone call, Oakland is going to pay out. They just, they just want to be done with this. Couple that are over $2 million.
So is it normal legal practice, Doug, to just go back to when the lawsuit actually started that determined the case?
Yeah. So what? So let's say this were a normal class action, and the case in Rafeli was filed four or five years ago. Took that long to get up. Then it would be three years from the date of that filing for all those people if the class gets certified. Now, we've already had a victory. I won in Ionia County Circuit Court where we were lumped with 15 other local counties. And the tax, the other county's lawyer was part of MMRMA. They thought that was efficient. Instead of having to go to each county, they, they just wanted to deal with it in one case. But I went in and said, wait a minute, Ottawa can only be sued in Ottawa. And venue here is in the 20th Circuit Court only. With all due respect, Your Honor, we don't belong in Ionia Circuit Court. She agreed with me. And that case was dismissed. We really don't have right now in state court a class action, meaning if one gets filed, which probably will now shortly, it'll only be three years from that filing date. Okay? So, you know, that's part of the, that the lawyers are going to be doing now, and each of these cases is trying to narrow our exposure. And by then, I'm going to be fighting that it be in the 20th Circuit Court only, and we don't have enough cases for a class action. Each person should sue individually. We only have 15. That's not enough for a class. And so that each, each of the 15 property owners, and a lot of them won't care. Like I said, I know we have one that is fairly in large amount. They don't want the money. So they would not sue. They would leave it in place, and we wouldn't have that exposure if it's not a class action. So, you know, this is going to be a little complicated, but I'll give you, you know, some updates as I go along here and things evolve. But my effort will be to try to minimize our exposure in the near term, and then MAC is going to have to figure out with, you know, the commissioners across the state, what's a good remedy for this situation to amend the statute so it's constitutional. In general, it's fair to say that we have far fewer of these in most counties in the state.
Thanks, Doug. Yep. Just one final note. I want to just emphasize what Phil said about the MAC conference and encourage all of us to join in that conference, especially since Phil is, is going to be not the new president this year, but I think they're holding off for a year.
Yeah, we just put everything on hold for a year because of COVID, so.
Yeah. Otherwise, I would say we, we need to all be there to support Phil.
Next year, guys.
Taking on, but we'll, we'll wait till next year with that.
All right. Sit in the front row.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maybe we'll win some of those raffle awards.
Yeah. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission at this time, they certainly can. Limit your comments to three minutes and give us your name. If not, we'll look for the same on Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to come on, raise your hand?
No one, no one on Zoom, Mr. Chair.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
The move.
Move to support it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.